Welcome. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Amy, would you take roll call, please?
Mrs. Toby.
Here.
Mr. Gilbert.
Here.
Mr. Detzl.
Here.
Mr. Heather.
Here.
This is Slattery.
Our mission statement is the Northwest Local School District will create a responsive learning community where all students are valued, challenged, and guided along a pathway to success. And we first would like to approve the agenda. I need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Jim, second. Sis four to zero.
We're excited to start tonight with a special presentation from White Oak Middle School. So tonight we have Kristen Grody, the principal of the building, and John Boyes, the music director, who are going to share some updates from their music program.
Do you have the presentation? Did you send it to Amy? Does this work? Oh, yeah. Okay. Good evening. My name is Kristen Grody, and I am the proud principal at White Oak Middle School. And I have the pleasure of introducing your presenters to you tonight. We have five representatives specifically from White Oak Band. We have four distinguished band members. Anaya Brooks, eighth grade, who plays the trumpet. Give a little hi, Anaya. She's in both band and stage band. We have Zach Benjamin, who's also in the eighth grade. He plays the trigger charbonne, which I didn't know what it was until I interviewed him for this event. And he's also in the band and stage band. We have one more eighth grader, Vanessa Miller, who plays the trumpet. Seventh grader, just kidding, I made her older than she is. She's a seventh grader, and we have one other seventh grader who plays percussion, and that is Nolan Winkler in band and stage band. I also want to introduce to you Mr. John Boyes, who has been the band director at White Oak Middle School for 16 years and has been with the district for 20. So, welcome to our White Oak Band representatives.
Well, thank you for having us today. I'm John Boyes. Like I said, I've been at the White Oak Band for a while now. But I just wanted to share that the band is growing, and we are on the rise. And we've been really working hard on recruiting and retaining students and putting in some new strategies to try to keep building the program, and I think it's been effective so far. We've got 145 students in the band program, that's just band students at White Oak, which is higher already than we had before COVID. So we've recovered completely from before COVID there. It's currently actually the highest we've had in the last 10 years and the third highest in the last 20 years that I've been employed here. We are definitely on the way up. Sixth grade enrollment as well, just so just sixth graders, which is where band starts now, in sixth grade, so that's all the beginners. We have the highest enrollment we've had in seven years as well there. Retention is also up, so it's up higher retention from grade to grade average is higher than it was the average before COVID. So we're at 75% retention and climbing. So I made a chart of the records that I've had since I've been there of the band enrollment. And there's been a bit of a roller coaster, which is several different factors that have affected that, and you can see the big blank space from when COVID happened. But the year since COVID, you can see we are trending upward. So we're looking forward to keep that number going that direction. Okay, I'm gonna ask students to come up and share their experience as well. This is Zach.
Hello, I'm Zachary Benjamin. I am in eighth grade. This is my third year with the band. I have participated in stage band, and I did this OMEA solo and ensemble last year. Something I learned in band was how to work with people that you might not be very fond of. And the OMEA solo and ensemble was really fun. An experience that I'm looking forward to this year is the Kings Island competition later on. WAM's Band Awards for 2023 and 2024. OMEA Cincinnati Honor Band 2024 Selecties. Dashell Suece, Robert Wagner, Marissa Arantz, Evelyn Stein, Matthew Henson. OMEA Solo and Ensemble Awards Excellent Second Honors for Students. Chiramentry, Robert Wagner, Zach Benjamin, Savannah Russell. Superior Highest Honors Evelyn Stein, Marissa Arantz, Marcus Ingram, Charlie Shore, Kayden Inman, Lisa Osage, Matthew Henson, Luke Horst, Stephen Lackey, Andrew Mikes. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nolan Winkler. I'm in seventh grade. I've been in band for two years. I participate in stage band. Band has taught me how to play different percussion instruments. Band has also taught me how to be more social. I get to go to band every day and do what I love with all of my band friends. One of my favorite memories from band is the concerts. The concerts are a very fun way to show our parents and anyone else what we have learned. I look forward to getting to go to all the Kings Island, wait, I look forward to getting to go to Kings Island with all my band friends this year and doing a competition. Am I supposed to list that? CHS Marching Band is open to all eighth grade students. WAM Stage Band, weekly after school. Jazz Band. OMEA Honor Band, January 10th through 12th at West Clermoke High School. OMEA Solo and Ensemble Event, March 29th at Batavia High School.
My name is Anaya Brooks. I am in eighth grade, and I have been in band for three years now. I hope, I play the trumpet. I hope to be in stage band this year. Band has taught me that some things divide us, but me and my bandmates are brought together by music. Band has truly been a wonderful experience, and it has made me very happy in my skills from then to now and all the songs I can play. My favorite memory in band was Music Hall. Music Hall was a great trip, and I had so much fun listening to music and spending time with my friends. I look forward to growing and excelling in my skills in band and become more musically diverse. WAM's Band Concert Schedule, 2024 to 2025. September 6th was band night at the CHS football game. October 3rd will be our fall concert. December 12th will be our winter band concert. March 2nd, Music in Our Schools Month Concert at CHS. March 4th will be Music in Our School Month Concert at WAMs. March 13th is our spring concert, May 17th, oh, May 17th is our spring concert, May 17th, ah, May 17th, Kings Island Music in the Parks Festival Competition.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Miller, and I am a seventh grade band student, and this would be my second year of band. I love band. I've been playing the trumpet for two years, and I participated in stage band, and I will this year as well. Band has taught me many things. It has taught me to play new instrument, as well as no longer being afraid to perform in front of hundreds of people. It has also taught me to be patient and helpful teamwork. I have already created so many memories, but one of my favorites is when I tried out for stage band and didn't know what I was doing at all, but I successfully got in because I tried my best. I also love the individual attention Mr. Boyes provides, myself and the other students. The thing I look forward to most is getting to perform at many different places in front of loads of people. Band has given me and so many other people a chance to learn something new, useful, and fun. Thank you.
Go band!
Thank you, guys, for being here, and you guys did a great job. If you were there on Friday night at the high school football game, you guys did awesome. So, thank you for being here.
We just wanted to say thank you all so much for your support, and all the parents as well, to help us have this program and keep it growing and going up. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And Mr. Boyes, I just wanna, the enrollment numbers they have are amazing, and the entire music department across the district has been coming together the last couple of years, collaborating on strategies to grow our music program across the entire district. And obviously, those strategies are working and working exponentially at WAMs. So congratulations to you, and it's something that we're striving for district-wide. So thank you for setting a great example.
Thank you.
John, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
What are some other contributing factors for the growth and interest of the band?
So, like I said, we were doing a lot of strategies where we get to, we work across buildings and communicate with the counselors and the principals and the music teachers at the elementary schools. We collaborate with the high school bands so they can come and visit and do performances for the elementaries. The middle school directors visit the classrooms and talk to every student about the music programs. The counselors also go get to visit the classrooms and walk them through the scheduling process. And then we have events in the evening, like the try at night, where the students can come out and try instruments, and they have actual instrument, every instrument there for them to try, so they can get an idea of which one they like the best and which one they sound the best at.
Can you give them one more round of applause?
John, your picture of 20 years, that's quite a smile after 20 years.
Yeah. Still loving it.
Have all the students be outside?
Thank you.
Thank you. You all are more than welcome to stay for the entire event if you want to, but if you want to step out, it's time. All right. Next, we have the student recognition. I'm gonna fill in for Nancy. She does a great job with this, so we'll do our best here. First, with academics, we have a list of students. The district has been using Common Assessments made up of questions from Ohio State tests throughout the school year to monitor student achievement for the ONE Plan. And, oh, that's not the first page. Skip the, okay. So we have some advanced students and some accomplished students listed here. Grades 10 who have completed their first Common Assessment for English Language Arts, and we would like to recognize and appreciate their hard work. Next. That's okay. All right, next, we would like to recognize Zachary Lang. All right, so we have, next, we have 600 students who are identified as English language learners. The school year, last year, we had 262 of these students who were in their first or second year enrolled in the United States in school at all. So we would like to recognize this program and these students for working hard, the proficiency in the areas of listening, speaking, reading, and writing, the OELPA. In the spring assessment, 152 of our students met or exceeded the growth expectations set by the state, and 82 of these demonstrated proficiency. And next, we have Zachary Lang. Zachary is from Northwest High School, and we would like to recognize him. He has started a district-wide club to support students taking college courses while in high school through our CCP program. Zachary began taking these courses as an eighth grader at Pleasant Run. He's completed five college courses through Cincinnati State and Sinclair. He is currently enrolled in four college courses as a junior and intends to continue to take advantage of this fantastic opportunity and help support other students who are exploring CCP. And with citizenship, Pleasant Run Middle School would like to recognize sixth grade Freeman Settles. Freeman has had an outstanding start to the school year. He's a friendly and kind-hearted student who excels in his classroom studies. Freeman actively and consistently participates in class and is helpful to others. His positive attitude and respectful demeanor make him a role model for his peers. Freeman is a creative thinker and has an excellent sense of humor outside of school. Freeman enjoys basketball, football, and karate, showing his dedication and teamwork in various activities. Team Journey is excited to see how Freeman continues to positively impact Pleasant Run and our community in the future. Houston Early Learning Center would like to recognize these students for following their PBIS model by behaving in ways that are both kind and safe. The students shown in this photo were the first pandas to get chosen from the prize box because of their power card points that they've earned from the staff at Halc. Pleasant Run Elementary would like to recognize some fifth grade students for serving as role models for others by being respectful and kind to staff and students in the cafeteria. These students are consistently meeting school expectations for behavior and are encouraging their classmates to do the same. And Monfort Heights would like to recognize their student ambassadors Seth Tingle and Revimbu Mashanjay. These students are in charge of welcoming new students and families to Monfort Heights. They are responsible for taking students on tours of the building and answering questions from the student perspective. They are thrilled that these two students would be willing to play such an important leadership role for the school. And in community service, Corrin Middle School would like to recognize eighth graders Noli Evans and Luke Thielen, as well as sixth grader Carolyn Thielen for volunteering their time on the morning of August 14th to assist with the beautification and landscape in the front of the school in preparation for open house. CMS is very appreciative of their hard work and dedication to making the school look great. And I know that was a hard job because the fencing being up all summer created for a lot of weeds and work out there, but it looks great, so. Finally, at Northwest High School, in honor of World Suicide Prevention Day, Northwest High School Student-Led Hope Squad is hosting a lunch activity tomorrow on September 10th to spread awareness and to develop a community of support for other students. So what an awesome way to, for them to be a positive influence at Northwest. Congratulations to all of our students, and thank you. All right, Butler Tech, Jim?
Nothing tonight. We'll have a full presentation next morning.
Chris, any legislative update?
Nicole, they're still on their big break for the election, but I did wanna just mention, 'cause you just brought it up here about the Ohio Suicide Hotline, that there are 19 centers in the state, and working in psych, I was even surprised at this number. Last year, actually, in the last two years, they've received over 300,000 calls, which is quite incredible, in my opinion. So that's sort of an update legislatively, and soon as they get back in session, we'll have plenty to tell you, I'm sure.
Awesome. Thank you. Any reports from employees?
Not tonight.
And I was not given any community comment cards?
So for the consent items tonight, we'll start with personnel with five resignations, two change in status, three initial appointments, and various supplemental items, and then from business.
For vendor contracts tonight, we have non-public school contracts, special education, Title I services, gifted, marching band, CPR training, and preschool. For donations, we have two anonymous monetary donations to PRE and to Taylor Elementary School. And we have the Greater Cincinnati Foundation donation of children's theater tickets to Corrin High School Special Education. And we have the Grace Communion Church donation of school supplies to Monfort Heights Elementary.
With that, the superintendent recommends the board approve the adoption of the consent items as listed.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? On the, with the transportation, the, in the past, you know, we've had the go-to-the-whole-school, we were just talking about this before the meeting, but now some people aren't getting the messages that were. Did we switch programs, or what would be the reason that people aren't getting the updates that the buses are canceled now, that we're getting them last year?
Yeah, so last year, as you remember, we were having trouble with the messaging system and being able to get those databases sorted out. But this year, we have contracted a new messaging system. We've been able to control those databases, and so now we're able to go back to those targeted messages just to the folks that are being impacted. So if your bus is not canceled, you should not receive a message. If it is canceled, you should. So we'll be sending out a message tomorrow, district-wide and to all of our non-public folks, just to make sure that they understand that. And if you have any troubles, then you can contact Transportation or myself.
Okay. If, so if somebody, there's a family that was, last year, they would have gotten the message, and so this year, like, for example, the bus in my neighborhood, this morning, half of them got the message, and they got email or text, and the other half didn't, even though their kids have rode that bus for years. What would cause that for those kids not, for those parents not to get notified?
Well, that's something I'll need to look into, so if we have a couple names, we can look into that.
Those are the ones I had talked to you about before.
Yeah, and I'm working with Matt. We're taking a look at that to make sure that if we have issues like that, that we get that fixed. We have several systems that are talking to each other, and it just takes one flaw to create a problem, but we'll get that corrected.
Have we thought about sending it to the schools so the schools can also send a text, whether it be a parochial or a public, just so that it's not, like, a neighbor posted on Facebook? That's how half my neighborhood saw it this morning.
Yeah, so whenever we send that message out at 5:00 in the morning, there's also a message that goes out to all the Northwest principals and all the non-public principals as well. Yes.
And I would say, because the message is going out tomorrow to everyone who has a rider of our transportation system, if tomorrow they don't get a message, then they should reach out, because there's obviously a disconnect in the system between their information and them getting it. So if someone doesn't get a message tomorrow, they should reach out to get that fixed before they need the information about a cancellation.
Okay. And then with cancellations, I know we're, if you, do you know the number that we've had this year so far, just in the past couple of weeks offhand, or?
Not offhand. I could look that up.
But compared to last year, we are already almost daily canceling. Is it, are we, do we know what is causing that? I know we talked about heat. Is it, are we having illnesses, or are we, is it hiring, or?
I would say both. You know, as we discussed in the last meeting, we need subs, so we need drivers, and we have had several illnesses. So when we only have enough drivers contracted and we have some illnesses, for example, today, we had all three of our supervisors driving. We had to cancel three routes, and plus, we had two that we had to cover. So that's the reasoning behind the cancellations.
And right now, we have pretty much drivers for every route, but when they're canceled, when they call off, we don't have subs. So the signs that are out in front of the board tonight, you'll start seeing those at our buildings, because we need to build that pool of sub-drivers. So we're gonna continue to advertise, we've done targeted marketing on Facebook, we've done a hiring event last week where we had five potential drivers who came in interested in the position, so now it's getting them through the process. So we just need to continue to build that subpool.
And then one more thing on that. On Thursday, the Stop Finder Act was not working. Does it alert anyone at Transportation that it's not working so that they can then say, send something out to people after a certain amount of time, or?
No. So unfortunately, that was a problem, and they don't have a site that tells you the status of their site. So that's one of the things that we discussed with Trans Finder. They do have a site that they're working on, so hopefully, they'll have that up soon so that we can monitor and know whenever their system goes down.
Okay. Okay, thanks. And then the number of students impractical to transport, is that pretty much stay the same every year? Have we seen a higher number this year because of the number of students that withdrew from our school and went to private, or?
I don't know why, but the number is higher this year, yes.
I don't know if that's related. And on the vendor contracts, I saw that we're, I believe we're paying Hamilton County an additional $485,000 for three positions. Is that an accurate statement?
Which position are you talking about, real quick?
Where it says the $485,000 for sign language?
Oh, those are all positions that are related to providing services to students with an identified disability.
So that seems very high for three positions. Is that something we've, have we ever looked at bringing those in-house?
Yeah, for some of the specialized positions, we have looked at bringing them in-house. We've tried to bring school psychs in, but we've not been able to be competitive in the market because these are very specialized positions, and so in order to find them and have them on a reliable basis, 'cause a lot of these are not year-to-year, some of them are, some of them are for a short period of time. So it's more effective to go to the county than to try to have ourselves and then riff a position because of change in status of the IP.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Thank you for the updates. Sis four to zero.
So good evening. Tonight, I have to ask the board, I have one item. I need to ask the board to approve the regular board meeting minutes for August 19th, dispense with reading of and approve the August 19th regular board meetings as listed.
So moved.
Thanks.
Any questions? Sis four to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So in other items, we have policy updates. This is just updating compliance officer information for our policies that require a compliance officer. So superintendent recommends that the board approve the item as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Sis four to zero.
The next one is the resolution to declare students impractical to transport. So the superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution declaring students impractical to transport as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Sis four to zero. Thank you.
So next is a resolution authorizing the school district to enter into the resolution of acceptance into the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission Classroom Facilities Assistance Program Segment 1. The superintendent recommends the board approve the resolution of conditional approval as granted by the Commission for the Classroom Facilities Segment 1 Project in accordance with the provisions of ORC Section 3318.05.
So moved.
Second.
Did you practice reading that?
It's a mouthful.
Sis four to zero.
And then the last item is an out-of-state field trip request for Corrin High School Band to participate at Simon Kenton High School on September 21st. Recommend the board approve the out-of-state field Recommend that the board approve the out-of-state field trip as listed.
Need a motion in a second?
Second.
This is 4 to 0.
Alright, and then, just a couple of updates. I want to just remind everyone of some dates that are upcoming. On Tuesday, we have a two-hour delay, so that is time where we will be delayed for two hours, our staff will still report, they have duties that they need to accomplish during that time, but it'll be a two-hour delay for our students, that's the first of four that we have this school year. Again, on Monday, September 16th, will be an in-service day, so no students on that day, and I want to take time again to encourage our families to complete their registration gateway update. A reminder went out to all families, and then a correction to the ones who needed to complete that. We still have less than 50% of our families who have completed that process. That is an important process, 'cause, as you mentioned earlier, Nicole, with communication going out, if we don't have the most up-to-date information for a family in terms of phone number and email address, they could be missing important information. So, it's important that our families complete that process. And there will continue to be reminders sent out to families who don't complete it, so complete it and avoid future things coming up. And then, the last thing I want to just address is the school threat that happened last week. Our school was listed among other school districts on an online potential threat. We take safety as a top priority, and we do not play when it comes to school threats. We take everyone serious, we respond to it as such, and I hope that it wasn't lost in the media cycle, that there were arrests made across the region last week based on multiple threats that happened across our entire region. School threats are serious, and we need people to understand that school threats will be always taken seriously, and there will be not only legal consequences, but school consequences. It is never funny to make a threat, and it is never an excuse to say, "I was joking." You will still be cited with school discipline, which will be severe, and legal consequences. So, I want to thank our families, our students, and our staff, who, when they saw something, they said something. That is a key component of how we stay safe, is people doing that, see something, say something. But I also want to take the opportunity for people to have conversations with their kids, to reinforce, when you see something, say something, but to also have the conversation around, it is never funny to make a threat, and it will be taken serious, and there will be significant consequences. So, we appreciate that we maintain a safe environment and the work that it takes to go in and do that, but we want to make sure that we continue that conversation with our schools, our families, and our kids around the severity of doing this, and the importance of seeing something and saying something. Thanks.
Is there any, can you just say, talk about a little bit why you chose the four, the early release? I mean, obviously, transportation, early, or, excuse me, late start was better than early release for transportation, but what's, is it eight hours that's required?
It was based on negotiations with our teachers' union around the requirements that they have with reporting, as it requires to state-level, federal-level, and local reporting for just the amount of work that they have to monitor and update. And so, because of the recognition of the time needed to do some of those logistics, it was, we worked out with them the plan that we would do these four late starts. It's, could be a late start or early release, but we worked with Transportation to determine what would be the least impactful to the transportation system, so that we could give the teachers the time they need to complete the work that needs to be done, and make it as minimally impactful as possible.
Is there any, do you know if Wise Kids is open at the same time for elementary students?
We had worked with them to try to do it, they, they were going to try to stay open, but because of staffing, I've heard that they're not gonna be able to.
And then, one more thing, do you have any update on the retirees pass that I had asked?
Yeah, they were working on a process for that, so it'll be the same kind of thing where they'll be able to come in and get their card, so that they have the permanent lifetime pass for any event, so that should be happening by the end of the month.
Okay, great, thank you.
Daryl, when an event happens, like happened out in Georgia, do we have support that goes out to our staff?
Yeah, so, if, like, our, the times we had the swatting incidences, that thankfully were fake, but were very significant to our staff, we have counseling that comes on-site to help guide them through that process. It's one of the reasons why, in those two instances that we had that were horrific, but we canceled school the next day for students, because we spent time with the staff to debrief about everything, provide them the supports they need, and to make sure that they were ready, so that when they received the students the next day, they could process the events with the students. So, we do have supports that are out there, and then, we have ongoing supports for our staff through an app that we have, through our Health Consortium. So, last week, after the events happened with the school threat, we sent out an email to all of our staff with links to some of those resources, just to kind of have it all fresh on their, on their screen, so that if they needed to reach out for support, they could. Because this is, teaching is already a stressful job, working in education in general is, but when you add on that layer of stress around a school threat, it's something that shouldn't have to be a consideration of what we do, but unfortunately, right now, it is, and so, it adds that extra layer of stress that just makes an already difficult environment sometimes more difficult. So, we know it's stressful for the parents as well as the kids, and we want to make sure that we are supporting our staff to make sure they're the best version of themselves, so they can bring out the best in our kids.
What is the online, the ongoing, what, is that a, like, an online support, or?
It's an app that all of our staff have access to, that they can download, and it has, it's kind of a, it's an employee assistance program, but it's kind of that on steroids, so it's called Modern Health, and all of our staff have access to it. They can get in there, and there's daily pauses they can take, there's coaching they can do, there's therapy they can take, and it allows them to start those sessions, but then automatically roll right into continuum of care with that same therapist into the health plan that we have, if they have our health plan. So, there's a lot of benefits to it, it's a great resource. We actually have been pushing it for the last year and a half to our staff, and we have some really great enrollment numbers, where our staff are engaging with that as an ongoing, just, mental health and support awareness.
A lot of these outlets have, like, a limitation with the number of visits, like, the old way of EAP was, you got three visits. Is there a limitation on that now?
Our staff have six coaching, and they have six therapy visits, each, and then, if they have our health insurance, that therapy can roll right into their health plan.
Have we ever thought about going to, like, some of these behavioral health outlets in our community, like Talbot House, or Cincinnati Behavioral Health, 'cause they have teams of people that could, like, just have one person come in at lunchtime and sit in the teacher's lounge, if somebody just wants to bend their ear or vent, or?
We have had, because we have the Children's Home Therapist in all of our buildings for students, they have been a partner, where we've had an event where we've needed support for staff, they've sent additional therapists to just work directly with our staff, and the staff that's in each building has been accessible to our staff on kind of a sporadic moment, but not an ongoing moment, but just to kind of be another voice to kind of get them, intake them, and refer them somewhere. And then, we have, through our Modern Health, we have the ability, if there's a significant event, that they will send therapists here to help in a crisis situation. So, we have a lot of resources that we try to make sure that we have the ability to pull in if we need them.
Thank you.
Chris, any comments?
One thing you might need, Nicole.
Jim?
The one thing, the student success thing we get from Butler Tech, it is now getting emailed to everybody. So, if you don't get it, let me know, and I'll get their email, your guys' email address up to Butler Tech.
Have they sent one yet?
It's, this coming month.
I just want to say thank you to Kristin and John for bringing the kids in today, Zach, Nolan, Anaya, and Vanessa. Also, I wanted to say, when you were doing your student achievement update, Zachary that was in that, I believe he came and presented last year, the year prior, two years ago. How many college credits potentially can somebody, as they go, 'cause, I mean, now we're down in junior high, like, they could come out of high school?
So, technically, College Credit Plus is open to students in grades seven through 12. Students can earn up to 30 hours per year, that includes summers. The hours do include high school or junior high school credits, middle school credits that they're earning as well, so it's a total of 30. Families can go over that, they just have to self-pay beyond the 30 hours a year, so if you think about that, 30 hours and seven, like, if you add the numbers up, a significant amount of credit could be earned through the College Credit Plus program.
Yeah, I mean, you're testing out of two years of college, easy?
Easily.
That's a good deal, absolutely.
Yeah, we have some students that are full-time, taking college courses as their school day at this point.
When you look at Zachary's putting support groups together, and, you know, I would imagine some of that is just, he's got a permission and a confidence to think out of the box and do these things, which is...
He was one of the first middle school students to start in College Credit Plus in our district. We have not had a lot, but with the help of his counselor and a group of students at Pleasant Run Middle School, those are the students that presented us, to us, two years ago.
And then, do we use him as a, like, say, an ambassador to promote this?
It sounds to me like the school is going ahead and promoting it, I think it's a great idea.
Great, thank you.
Just want to thank everyone for continued patience as we get things going with transportation and classes and everything else. Thank you to our staff, and remind everyone about the delayed start tomorrow, and just continue to wish all of our athletic teams and music programs and after-school clubs and everything that our students and our staff are participating in, I wish them luck as they continue on through the school year. I need a motion in a second to adjourn.
Second.
This is 4 to 0, thank you.